All right, good evening. This is the October 6, 2021 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Happier to be here.
Mayor Bailey?
I'm here. All right, next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody who wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway, and we did have one gentleman sign up. So we'll start with him, and that's Matthew Hislop. If you want to head on up there, and then just state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. And my name is Matthew Hislop. My address is 7560 Harkness Avenue South in Cottage Grove here. So first off, thank you for your time, Mayor and City Council. My topic here this evening is connected to the Play development that's occurring on Harkness Avenue at the moment, and really, it's not directly related to that specific project, but it's a bigger scope of current and future development along Harkness Avenue South where we live. I had sent in a letter to the City Council here and asked that that be placed into the packet here this evening, and so I think I'll simply read my letter and open up any comments that the council and mayor can share with us tonight. And I know this is an ongoing discussion that'll probably unfold in the time to come. I do want to state upfront also that more recently, within the last couple of weeks, we've talked with the city staff quite a bit, and they've been excellent to work with and communicate with. So with that said, here is kind of our statements for tonight. So my name again is Matthew Hislop. My wife Katie Hislop and our children live at 7560 Harkness Avenue South in Cottage Grove. So we've been citizens of Cottage Grove for the past 18 years. When we purchased our home on Harkness Avenue South six years ago, the surrounding area was single-family, low-density, really was a neighborhood of rural-ish, small acreage parcels. I was here four years ago for the 2040 Comp Plan meetings, wrote a letter at that time, had a chance to come up and speak as well. So although then and now, we did not support the land use change and fully communicated our position with the City Council a few years ago, the land use on Harkness Avenue South was changed to high-density residential. This is not a neighborhood characteristic that we signed up for when we bought our home. And with that said, we do have several concerns and questions related to the city's high-density land use guidance on Harkness Avenue South, along with current and future development of Harkness Avenue South. So a major part of the land use re-guidance decision, again, here some years ago, really focused on a master planned aspect and related graphics at that time, the streets, utilities, and et cetera. These concepts were used in justification. They really demonstrated benefits, and it was to solicit support for cohesive redevelopment of that area with the idea of benefiting those involved. So to date, it's our sense, the reality of proposed developments since that time has really been a fragmented or piecemeal development process. We're genuinely disappointed in the city of Cottage Grove's acceptance of that process, given what was portrayed a few years ago, okay? The master plan concept that was previously promoted. The city's decision to re-guide and promote redevelopment not only hasn't had the impact on our lifestyle choice to live in a small acreage neighborhood, but also has a very real risk of having a substantial negative impact on our property value. Our property sits just directly to the north of the Play development, and given the shape and size of our particular parcel, it's more difficult to envision a standalone development being able to occur right on that piece alone. It's really built and developed the land as a single-family residence, okay? So our home sits on an acre and a half. It's approximately 80 to 150 feet wide, 500 feet deep. Again, it was created for single-family land use. Originally, it was a subdivision of what is now the proposed Play property. Again, the parcel's shape size has challenges in its ability to be redeveloped as a freestanding parcel. So for this reason, the area's high-density re-guidance has put us at a disadvantage with limited options. So foreseeable future, we may be forced to develop at the discretion of the future developer of the parcel to our north, or we would become kind of bound by apartment buildings on both sides of our home, right? We'd turn into kind of a bit of an island there between four-story buildings. So you can appreciate that legitimate homebuyers, if we were to sell to an individual homebuyer, they don't favor apartment buildings on both sides of a 120-foot wide home. So we have genuine concerns on our lifestyles, our home, the risk of negative financial impact. So absence of a city master plan, we question the city of Cottage Grove on how our parcel in the future and the rest of Harkness Avenue South, you know, has a viable redevelopment opportunities, right? And at the property value that we would say incur today if it was still a single-family rural-ish setting, similar to what it has been in the past. So given the abutting proposed development, we also ask, you know, how does our property get redeveloped in the future? How does it get access? How does it get trunk utilities? Again, some of those questions have been brought up, and the conversations have begun with city staff, who's, again, been excellent. Additionally, how's the future redevelopment of the actual roadway and the trunk utilities of Harkness Avenue South to be paid for, right? So what is the timing of the improvements of Harkness Avenue? And has the city of Cottage Grove collected funding for the future development of the road from the first two developers? And then will it also be paid by future developers? So our strong ask is to the city of Cottage Grove that the city acknowledge our parcel is unique from some of the others, say, five to 10-acre parcels along Harkness Avenue And it creates a challenge to be turned into high-density land use that causes unique challenges particularly for us. So we ask the city include us in all future conversations on development, particularly to the north of our parcel, and that the City Council instructs staff to require budding development provided for the co-develop with our parcel. So essentially, we've talked with city staff on that also, and I understand perhaps you cannot require a developer to include our lot, but that's a conversation that we'd like to have continuing forward. In the absence of this, the city's re-guidance to high-density, again, creates a legitimate risk for our home being isolated. The development plans for Harkness Avenue area, again, are their unwelcome change to our way of life. The proposed changes also create a unique risk and concern to our home value, financial loss, and simply to our family way of life, right? That's our home. So we'd like to, you know, our questions and concerns to be realized, addressed, and answered by staff, City Council, the mayor, in partnering, kind of walking through all of this. Couple of points that were brought up in the commission planning meeting here just a couple of weeks ago. One comment was that nobody likes development, right? The cornfield across the street to become developed, right? In our situation, it's, these aren't cornfields, you know? These are our home. Additionally, there were some comments made, and really, they're not building single-family homes next door either. They're putting up high-density apartments. So another comment was that, well, given development money, you know, your parcel may sell pretty well, and you'll be just fine. Here again, too, given the particular shape-size of our parcel, I don't know that it has a lot of potential for a standalone development on it. There again, too, those are some of the points I wanted to bring up for us this evening. I certainly welcome City Council or Mayor any comments that you may have, and we'll continue to work with the staff moving forward.
Okay. Do you have the letter? Did you already give it to staff? Okay. I just want to make sure that we got a copy of the letter. Just thank you, by the way, for coming in and speaking on the subject. I will just share with you that there has been other situations around the city where we've had what I almost would call landlocked kind of situations with, you know, landowners or residential properties that are going to be surrounded, if you will, by other types of development, and whether it's single-family or multifamily. And we have worked with the landowner or the property owner and the developers to try to create situations where we can, you know, pair people up if people are willing sellers, I guess, is the case there. So since you've already been having some conversations with our city staff, you will be included in any possible future conversations that go on to the north of you. And I don't know if you, if they had already answered some of the questions that you had. I even know what some of the answers were with, whether, you know, who pays for Harkness, excuse me? Who, where the previous developers, are they paying into Harkness? The answer is yes, so I can share that with you. The area on the other side of Harkness is medium-density, which is more on the east side of Harkness. So at some point, that would, it won't be high-density, but it would be medium-density. But we can definitely, you know, set up a meeting or whatever with you two to talk about what are some of the other options, to make sure that, again, you're not surrounded if that ends up being what could happen. We want to make sure that, you know, that you're incorporated. And I've had those conversations, like I said, with our staff in a couple of situations where residents have reached out to me and said, hey, how do we, we want to be included, or we do want to sell, how do I get out? And we've been able to help them negotiate and work with the developer or the end-user to make that happen, so.
Thank you. Yeah, it's not necessarily a position where we want to.
I understand.
We love our home, and we'd like to stay there as long as we can, but if development occurs, yes, to our north, and we're in a isolated situation, then it's just simply not the same home and environment that it was once upon a time when we purchased the home.
Okay. Councilmember Thede, you got a question or comment?
Yeah, first of all, a comment, and I kind of feel for you. Back in 2017, I was on the council, and the plan that was put together, I certainly didn't visualize it as being a four-story apartment sitting on the top of the hill right next to Harkness. And, you know, what I envisioned was, was kind of worked up, was more a resort and maybe a two-story type deal or something like that. So, but at any rate, one of the questions, and even I remember back in 2017, have you actually had discussions with your neighbors in terms of, you know, getting together and being, you know, together on communication or, you know, developers that come in or...
I've talked with our neighbors some in passing. We haven't sat down to have a formal meeting or dinner on the deck. But yeah, as walking down the street and comments here and there, particularly on our side of the street, for example, as you can imagine, everyone, there's different people that are in different stages of life, right? And just in different positions and what they'd like to do in their futures. Our particular position is this, when we purchased a home, again, as a low-density, you know, larger acre lot, was that our intentions were to raise the family here and be here for quite some time. Others, you know, might have different timeframes in their lives. So, you know, it's something that I can continue to, I could talk with our neighbors on, but there again, too, it's, you know, it's really kind of set out to be on an individual basis. So there'll be, it's a conversation that could be had, but I don't know that it's a conversation that I could have control over or much influence in.
As a group, you could, you know? And again, you know, nobody's forced to sell their home, right? But, you know, if you, you know, together, you know, you can, you can try to manage when things might occur.
Okay. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. It's Matthew, right?
Correct.
Okay. I want to start by thanking you for your very thoughtful, very rational presentation. When we, when we deal with folks who, you know, are disappointed or unhappy with sort of the direction of things, the reactions run the gamut. And you're very professional, very well-spoken, and I appreciate that a lot, and I'm sure the staff does, too. You know, this is a challenging scenario in that, you know, that piece of land along Hardwood or Harkness or both, you know, that's currently an R2 zoning. And in fact, in our packet tonight, we have an item that asks us to rezone it to high-density for the new development there. And we had a very robust dialogue as a council when the first opedan development came in, and, you know, I was opposed to it then, I'm opposed to it now. But when you're up here, we work as a group, we work as a body, and so it's as simple as count to three. If there's three votes for something, it happens. And what we do in those circumstances is we then try very hard to work closely with those who may have differing opinions, such as you, to ensure that we can facilitate the best possible outcome for your situation. And it sounds like you've already started working with staff on some of that dialogue. I want you to know that you will have our support as a council to make sure that whatever the outcome is, that we do our level best to make sure that that outcome is as positive as we can make it for you and your family. You're right, it's your home, and it's a beautiful piece of property. Dave and I live real close to you. I live in Timber Ridge, and he lives in Hidden Valley. And, you know, growing up in the area, you know, Harkness was just a beautiful kind of rural piece of road, it still is, and the people who live there chose to live there for a reason. But, you know, you raise some excellent points on both sides of the argument, actually, when you say some of my neighbors are in different places in their life, and that's what we have to work with, too. So even though we may not like what the potential outcome is, what we can do is we can try to mitigate any negativity or hard feelings or whatever the case may be by working closely with you and your family and your neighbors to kind of make the landing as smooth as possible. So please keep us informed. Let us know what you're thinking. The mayor's already made a commitment that you'll be included on all of the various communication, and he's a man of his word. If he tells you that's the way it is, that's how it's going to be. And hopefully you find that helpful, and we'll do our best to listen, to react appropriately. Development's tough. It looks very different on a map than it does when you're actually standing in somebody's front yard going, look at that right there, you know? That's polluting my line of sight, that's creating hardship for my family. And, you know, developers develop, that's what they do. That's their livelihood. And so, you know, there are sometimes very tough decisions that get made, and there's, for lack of a better phrase, collateral damage, as it were, and I don't like that, and you don't like that, especially because, you know, you're on the end of that. There's a lot of things to be worried about, but what we can do is we can try to ease your concerns to the best of our ability and make it so that whatever happens, the outcome for you and your family is as positive as possible. So you have our commitment on that, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, that would certainly be my ask, because the city staff, which already has partners with us as we walk through this in the years to come.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was the only person that had signed up on open forum. In the chance that somebody came in that wanted to speak on open forum but didn't sign up, was there anybody in the audience? All right, saying none, we'll go ahead and close open forum, and we will move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next is presentations. We do have one this evening, that we have a presentation with our, from our superintendent, Julie Nielsen, for the South Washington County Schools, and I believe you have a referendum coming up.
He do.
Or two, I guess.
Or two.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening, Honorable Mayor Bailey, council members. It's so great to be here. I haven't had the formal opportunity to meet all of you. I'm actually, let me think, 13 months into my role as superintendent, but I am not new to South Washington County Schools. I like to say that I've been here 30 years. I started as a student teacher at Oltman and Gray Cloud, and then an assistant principal, a principal, a teacher for many years. And so I'm certainly not new to the district, and I do remember when County Road 19, right outside of here, was all farmland. And coming from the farm, my mom said, this looks just like home. I brought her back now recently, and so she gets to see all of the housing that is popping up. But thank you for the invitation to be here. We wanted to share briefly about 10 minutes, just to talk a little bit about the ballot questions that we have on this fall for the school district. And you'll see on this first slide that it says stability and technology. And so question one will be focused on stability, and question two will be focused on technology. And we'll keep it pretty high level as we go through. So first on our ballot, the two questions, what we like to do is provide a visual so that as we're out in the community, and I was sharing with someone as we were out talking with our bus drivers today, they were asking about the question that the city of Cottage Grove is going to have on, and so we need to make sure we share information. But our two visuals are, of course, the teeter-totter or the seesaw, talking about stability. So question one is all about stability. And if you know anything about the school district, you know for the last 15 or 20 years, it has been unstable for a number of reasons. State funding, federal funding, how we get funding in, there has been a sense of instability across the district. And so question one would really focus on operational stability. And why that's important is because as we look around and we see the number of housing permits and the number of houses going up, we have other things to address in the form of bonds. And so our two questions that'll be on the ballot are levies. Question two is considered a capital projects levy, and what that question does is it provides dedicated funding for technology. And many times when people think about technology, they go straight to the devices, and the devices are really just one small fraction of the pie that we're talking about when we think about the $5 million. There's all the infrastructure work, there are the software, there's the connections and the business applications that we need to keep our central office connected with our schools. So ballot question one, I'll focus on that, and then Dan will take over question two. Question one is, again, on stability, it's an operating levy. And for those of you that aren't familiar, kind of with the little jingle or the saying, levies are for learning, bonds are for building. And so our two questions in fall will be around levies for learning. And operating levies are voter-approved and provide funding for our classrooms, instruction, and other school operating costs. One thing I didn't share as we were talking about the two questions, sometimes when the school district is out on the ballot, question one might be contingent on question two, and both of our questions, question one and question two, are standalone questions. So what will you see on the ballot? Question one is a revoke and replace. If you have paid attention at all, we actually did a stepping into the future, 2013, we took a little bigger step in 2015, and then 2017. So you can see we've been on the ballot a lot for operational costs. So what we're asking to do is to combine and replace our 2015 and 2017 levies into one that would be renewed in 2021, which means that it would be in effect until 2031 for 10 years. And with that, this is the first time the school district is asking for the rate of inflation on that portion, and that portion makes up about 25% of our overall funding that we receive. So we are asking for the rate of inflation attached. The increase would go from what we're currently receiving, $1,536, to $1,886 or $350 per pupil, which would generate $6.9 million per year. And as we think about budget adjustments that we just went through this past year, we reduced $9.4 million. And so this $6.9 million would certainly bring us back to more of an even level. The financial impact, the estimated tax impact on an average homeowner of $300,000, we're looking at about $13.16 more per month, or $158 per year. Our district webpage has great information. It will talk about the revoke and replace, and people can put in either the residential or commercial, and it will tax calculate right out to almost the dollar or to the cents, and so that is online as well. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Pye, who's also with me, and he is sometimes called the Money Man, but he is our Director of Finance and Operations.
Welcome, Dan.
Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, question two will focus on technology, and this too is a, this is what's called a capital projects levy. Now, a capital projects levy, the money can only be used for what is set forth in the ballot. So as an operating levy would be for general operating costs or anything that you could use your general fund for. When we talk about the $6.9 million in operating levy, that's in a budget of $260 million in our general fund. But a capital projects levy can only, the money can only be used for the purpose that's set forth in the ballot. And the ballot will say that we want to provide funds for improved instructional technology, excuse me, support staffing, maintenance support for students, staff devices, enhanced Presently, in 2017, we passed a capital projects levy question for $2 million a year. So your capital projects levies are going to be flat-dollar amounts, they're not per pupil, but we can easily calculate how much we're levying per pupil by just doing the math. About 100 school districts in the state have a capital projects levy for technology. We levy about $112 per pupil for capital project levy for technology. That ranks last of the 100. Our neighbors, Still Waters going out for $4.7 million, we're going out for $5 million. Excuse me. They're about half the size of us student-wise, and they're almost going to have the same amount of money. So per pupil, this would move us from $112 per pupil to $270 per pupil for technology costs. And you can see by the chart that Rosemont Apple Valley, Osseo, Robbinsdale, Minneapolis, YZ, some of our metro districts that are somewhat similar to us, they all have much, much more in levy per student in capital projects levy. Even if this passes, the $270 would just place us just past Rosemont Apple Valley and still be short of Osseo. So technically, what's on the ballot for the capital project before I summarize this slide is that we will revoke a $2 million capital projects levy, replace it with a $5 million capital projects levy, and that's not tied to inflation or anything, it's always going to be $5 million a year for technology, it can only be spent on technology. We generally spend about $4.5 million a year on technology now. We know that we're going to have more costs as all the devices we bought for the pandemic, 20,000 devices out there, we know we're going to have to replace those and maintain those and support those. And the way we pay for our technology now is the $2 million from the levy, and then we take... from the levy, and then we take some money out of the general fund, we take some money from somewhere else, and this will compact it all into one spot. So on November 2nd, on the ballot, as we summarize the two questions, stability question, we're going to revoke and replace the 15 and 17 operating levies and increase it by $350 per pupil and add the rate of inflation. And then on the second question, we're going to revoke a $2 million levy from 2017 and replace it with a $5 million levy that would last for 10 years and be used strictly for technology. The tax impact for the for all the questions, as we said earlier, on the operating levy, you're looking at about $13.16 per month on a home valued at $300,000 in this district. It will raise about $6.9 million a year, and it will increase each year with inflation. Or inflation goes down, then it decreases. It's going to file whatever the MDE, Minnesota Department of Education sets as inflation, the inflation dollars. Question two would add, would raise about $3 million more per year. It would cost about $4.16 per month for a $300,000 valued home. The total impact would be about, for the two questions, would be about almost $10 million more per year in revenue, and that is on a total revenue of $260 million. And the cost would be about $1732 per month on a $300,000 valued home in our district. With that, we're ready to have any listener, any comments or take any questions?
Thank you. So I do, Councilmember Dennis, you have a question you said?
I did, yeah. Good evening, Dan and Julie. For those that don't know, Dan and I serve as liaisons to the Board of Directors for the Chamber. So we get to see each other probably every month on Zoom. And you've done a good job over time of of talking about how COVID has affected some of the business. So I know that during that time, there were a number of students, or as we may call customers, right, that kind of had left the school district, whether to go to public school or private schools or homeschooling or whatever. What is our current standing as we see the numbers coming back versus what we had pre-COVID to where we are now?
Well, 2020, we actually had the highest enrollment we ever had, about 18,754 students. We lost 314 during the COVID year. So we dropped down to 18,400. As we stand, a couple days ago, when I had someone pull the numbers, we were back over 18,600. So we're inching back. We lost about 314, and we've gained back about 220.
Okay, so probably close to about 98.5%.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And I think it's important to note, too, as I I have conversations with other superintendents across the metro, and districts that are very comparable to us lost 1,000 students. And so what we also monitored in taking a look at the number of students is we had a number of kindergarten families who held their children back. And so we're seeing a bubble class go through. And so we are confident that we're going to continue to see what the housing starts in our communities, that we're going to continue to see that enrollment go up.
Any other, yes, Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys coming tonight and appreciate the presentation. You know, it seems goofy that Julie's been in place for as long as she has, and, you know, it's all been through Zoom. So it's nice to actually have a real human being in the room. I just wanted to state my support for both questions. My family will be voting for both questions, and and we've got three eligible voters in the House. But, you know, South Washington County Schools, for as long as I've lived in Cottage Grove and in South Washington County, have been a bastion of quality. And having good schools is really critical to having good, strong communities. One of the reasons that we continue to develop in the City of Cottage Grove, and frankly, in Woodbury and other areas, is because people want to move to places where they can raise a family and feel really good about their schools. And I know that, you know, both of you and the board and and all of your teachers and staff are firmly committed to that objective. And and that's why you're asking for this, is because you want to be able to provide the things that our kids need, that our families need in order to be successful. And I want to remind the voters that when it comes to schools, there are what you call unfunded mandates that schools deal with on a pretty regular basis. And I'm guessing Dan could spend a month of Sundays explaining those to us. But unfunded mandates include things like special education funding. And it's important to me because I I have a son on the autism spectrum who is part of Next Step right now, you know, went through Washington County Schools. And he had an absolutely magnificent experience. Every teacher, every therapist that he worked with, every school that he attended, he came home happy every day. And most of all, he developed into a 19-year-old young man who can communicate well with others. He has a job. He's learning life skills through Next Step and how to budget. And it all started with ECFE. It all started with early childhood. He was diagnosed when he was two and a half years old, and immediately, the school district came to our home, sat down with us, talked to us about, "This is the path forward. This is what we're going to do." There were support parent groups, all of which cost money. And having high-quality teachers costs money. Having fantastic occupational and speech therapists costs money. He was part of the DAP program. Having that costs money. And those are things that the state says that schools must provide. But they don't always fund them to the degree that they need to in order to deliver the sort of services that you're expected to. And that's why we have these sorts of votes periodically on funding questions and and referendums. So first of all, again, thank you very much for for everything that you do. It is not an easy job. Thank you for what you've done for my family and what you've done for families like mine, because I hear great stories all the time. And thank you for what you will continue to do in service to our community, in service to the entire South Washington County area, and in service to maintaining that reputation for excellence that District 833 has had since I was in school, since the mayor was in school. You know, it it truly makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. As I always say, our schools are our community, and our communities are our schools. And so thank you. As you just talked about special education, unfunded mandates, just something to keep in mind when we think about special education, the district contributes about $20 million per year in addition to what the state provides. And EL is about $3.5 million. EL is our English language. And so you're right, the DAP, the OT, the PT, just the mandated services, cost additional dollars. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, both of you, for coming. I know we've had the opportunity to speak. And I'll just say, Julie, the fact that we we worked together on the Youth Service Bureau Board prior to you being promoted to this role, and right when you got promoted, we ran into this COVID thing. So you definitely got thrown into the deep end of dealing with a lot of challenges. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is consent. Is there any items that council would like to pull on consent? Councilmember Wilson?
I'd like to pull C, please.
All right. C?
L.
Councilmember Thede, you said L?
L.
Okay. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull G, because I think we have some gentleman out there or somebody that wants to speak to us on that item. Anything else?
Want to start with panel?
Yeah, that's what I like to do. So we'll go ahead and start with which G under consent. And just for the public that knows what that is, what this is, the Fire Relief Association benefit level, and this may sound like a little bit of inside baseball, but it's our communication with our staff and and our firefighters as relates to benefits for the future, and how we've been working together with them over the years, and where we're at today. And I believe Matt Dahlquist would like to speak to us.
Yeah.
I'm with everybody behind you there.
Right, right. Mayor Bailey, members of the council, on behalf of the Cottage Grove Fire Department, the Relief Board, and myself personally, I do want to thank you for approving our retirement benefit increase tonight. As you probably know, when a part-time Relief Association or Retirement Association joins with the Minnesota Para organization, we have to freeze our increases for five years. We entered in 2017, and so 2022 is when we can have our first increase. We opened a dialogue with the city in, I don't know, February or March of this year. We met with Fire Chief Rick Rourdinis, Director of Public Safety Pete Kerner, back there in the corner, Finance Director Robert Roland, and City Administrator Jennifer Levitt. It was a tad intimidating, but it went, it went very well. Over the summer, we had a little ping pong back and forth with negotiate negotiations. And on September 7th of this year, we had our general membership meeting where we presented the city's offer to the membership, and it was overwhelmingly approved. I think any elected official would love to have numbers like that. This is a, we have never had an increase like this in 15 years, in my 15 years on the department. And prior to myself getting on, we've had to go down in our retirement benefit. So this is huge. One important note is that the increase for 2022 and future raises comes at no cost to the city. Using 2020 year-end numbers from Para, our fund is 187% funded, which means we have an 87% cushion. With going to the benefit level that we agreed to, we are going to drop that to 130% funded. So even a large raise like we're getting, we still are, have a 30% cushion, which is really good. So again, thank you, guys, for approving our increase and your continued investment in the part-time Fire Department staff. Thank you.
Fantastic. And thank you. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work that you do keeping our our community safe. One thing, though, just real quick, Matt, hopefully you can maybe allude to this. You know, the general public, you just mentioned that it isn't necessarily costing the taxpayers, citizens, anything.
Correct.
What is this for? I mean, I know what it's for, but can you share with the public what specifically we're talking about? So let's say you decide you're not going to be a firefighter anymore.
Yep.
What what happens?
So this is a, it's a little hard to explain. It's a retirement benefit. So every year of service, we get a certain amount of money. And right now, our benefit level stands at $6,000. So a 20-year firefighter or more, if they retire, they get that full $6,000 per year of service. And then, you know, 15 years, it's, you know, 85%. It goes up, you start at five years, you start at 40%, and then you go up 4% each year after that. And it's, it's, it's basically a way to to kind of compensate those of us who, not just Cottage Grove, this is, you know, kind of nationwide, but it's designed to compensate volunteer firefighters for their service. This account has been, or this fund has been around for much longer than I have. And each year, we would pay membership dues. When I got on, it was, I don't know, $25, $30 a year. And we'd pay membership dues. We had a full board, you know, all sorts of stuff. It was, it was a formal process. And we invested that money with a private investment firm, and they grew that fund. And in 2017, we decided to move that money from our private investments to the Minnesota Para, which is the government retirement account. And a lot of benefits came with moving to that fund or that organization. And in our five years, our fund has gone from a 1.8, 1.9 million to about 3.9 million. So we took all of our money that that we contributed over the years, and and many firefighters prior to me and everybody standing here contributed, we moved it over, and it grew. And that was one of the huge, you know, draws to Para was that the guaranteed return was was a lot higher. So we did, we did very well.
Perfect. Well, thank you. I know you did a really good job of trying to explain it because I could see sometimes the public might go, "We gave them a substantial increase."
Yep.
You know, that goes. But the the key here is you're all part-time. I don't hazard to guess right now what your quote unquote, I know it changes with different people and different levels, but your rate of pay hourly, which is what it really is. So the public maybe doesn't realize that, that you get paid an hourly rate.
You do.
And so this is an extra benefit that is given to those part-time firefighters. So when you do retire, you have something, a little nest egg. It maybe isn't a huge amount of money, but it definitely is something. So we appreciate and thanks our staff and you guys working together on making that happen. Councilmember Wilson, you wanted to share something?
I do. Thank you. So first of all, thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for all you do, serving our community. I know it's no secret to you, but, you know, public safety, police, fire, EMS has a tremendous amount of support at this council table. And hopefully you feel that. You also have a tremendous amount of support from our city administrator. And hopefully you feel that, and you felt that during these conversations. I want to compliment you on the way that you approach this. You know, I had conversations with several of you over the last number of months about this particular topic, and everybody approached it from a very open, respectful, "Let's work together to come up with a good solution" point of view. And and it didn't feel adversarial. It didn't feel negative. And I think the outcome bears out that that's probably a really good way to move forward, you know, with something like this, whether it's now or into the future. I do wonder about Bigum, because I think he's going to have about 50 years in. So how much does he get? I mean, is it going to be, you know, triple what everybody else gets or something?
We're going to start yearly fundraisers.
Okay, good. Yeah, yeah. Get the bake sale going. While you're here, and and, you know, this just popped into my head, I see several of you who I know went to New York City for the 20th anniversary of 9/11. And I know you're not prepared for this, but I wondered if, you know, one or two of you might share a little bit about that experience. I had the opportunity to talk to Captain Aragoni, along with the mayor and Senator Bigum, at the homecoming parade. And it sounded like it was an extremely important, special, moving situation. And I just wondered if you could give us a few words, you know, from from your heart, off top of your head, about the whole trip.
Yeah. So over the weekend of 9/11, 10 firefighters from Cottage Grove went to New York City specifically for the 20-year anniversary of 9/11. It had been something that was in the works for some time. And we knew it was going to be powerful. We knew it was going to be emotional. We didn't have a real, you know, we didn't have a set plan. As we went out there, we just knew that at some point, we're going to get in our Class As, and we're going to go to ground zero, and we are going to pay our respects. Through the weekend, we met a firefighter named Rob. He was retired from FDNY. He was at a Truck 35 and Engine 40 station. And they had lost the most amount of people on 9/11. They lost 11 firefighters that day. If you believe in fate, everything that transpired from that weekend was definitely fate. He invited us to their private ceremony, where we got to stand shoulder to shoulder with firefighters from FDNY, Boston, who covered down on their station after 9/11, Tempe, Arizona, Cottage Grove. And it was, it was pretty, it was pretty powerful as a group. We went to the nine, not as a group, but most of us went to the 9/11 museum and had all sorts of of cool memories, emotions. Something that I'm incredibly proud of, I know the chief and the director of public safety, and as our senior city staff and council members and mayor, I think you guys should be proud of, is we're the only department that did that that I know about in Minnesota. I could be wrong. I didn't see anything on Facebook, social media. I mean, that's really how we gather a lot of information. I didn't hear anything from anybody else. But your Cottage Grove firefighters got together, spent our own money, and went to New York City over the 20-year anniversary of 9/11.
It's one of the reasons I asked you to speak, is because you shared that with us last Friday, that that there didn't appear to be any other departments from Minnesota who went. And I know you guys did this on your own. You came up with this idea. You know, many of you who went are standing here tonight. And and we could not be more proud.
Yeah.
And I know, especially you, Nick, you know, you wear the And I know, especially you, Nick, you know, you wear the, the uniform of the military as well. And, and all you folks take your responsibility very seriously, and the brotherhood of firefighters is a big deal. I grew up as the son of a volunteer firefighter, and tell you what, listening to your stories and looking at your pictures when you sent them in, I know, Chris, you were sending a lot of pictures in, just phenomenal. And, and Mayor, I wonder if it would be okay if we had them all come up front and maybe we shook hands? What do you think?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Let's do it. Awesome.
Great stuff. Really good. It's going back.
Yep, absolutely. All right, we are good. Thank you, guys, and, and I assure you, I guess I shouldn't say thank you. Though Matt did say that, thank you for approving the, the, the deal here. We haven't actually approved it yet, so, but I think we're pretty good on this right now. I think we're good. So, thank you, guys. Why don't we go ahead and do aye, Councilmember Bithidi, an aye on the consent was the historical and architectural consultant for the Cedarhurst redevelopment.
Oh, it's L, but...
Oh, I said aye again, L. Sorry. That's because of my circles over the top of it.
I did just want to kind of bring this up, and it's, obviously, I'm, I'm the liaison to the historical preservation and, and very interested in the, in the Cedarhurst and so forth. And I guess I, I just wanted to have it explained a little bit. We didn't, we didn't talk a whole lot about this, and, and, you know, the way it's presented is, is that we don't anticipate any, any costs to the, to the city. And there's really, the, it shows some hourly rates, but it doesn't show any actual budget. So I just, just wanted to touch on what it is and, and just reassert that, about how the costs are being handled.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, you'll probably recall that workshop we had down at River Oaks where 360 came in, and they presented a site plan, and we provided feedback. And I know that evening, council had probably more questions than the developer had answers for. And we knew at that time that Cedarhurst is really the historic treasure in our community. We want to ensure that whatever happens on that site, it is done with the utmost of integrity, it stays in line with the Department of the Interior, and it is consistent in all those performance standards. So in order to ensure that the preservation that the developer is looking at doing at on the site, we wanted to ensure we brought a very robust, experienced team to the table. So that means an architectural team in ESG, and also the historical expertise and funding mechanism, dealing with SHPO and the Department of Interior in regards to performance standards and new history. So they will provide us really the best way to preserve the mansion. They will comment on the restoration plan that the developer will be putting forth. They will talk about how we preserve the site itself. What are those historical things that we need to be really conscientious of? What is the architectural standards that will accompany the site? We want whatever we do to obviously enhance and not detract. These experts can tell us that. Also, I know, council, you had a lot of questions about their performa. How much money do they need to make in the density to pay for the restoration? These experts have those answers. They understand the tax credits, they understand the federal loan process. Also, they, I think, can be a great asset to our developer to ensure that they are finding those tax credits that you guys had, you know, challenged them to seek out in other funding. So I think this partnership is going to be really a win-win to ensure that this treasure is preserved. When it comes to the cost recovery, just like any development in Cottage Grove, development pays for itself. So when they make an application, they actually pay us a financial escrow. As part of that financial escrow, it will be actually paying for these funds. So at this point in time, it really will depend on the speed that the developer submits plans and submits the escrow as when we actually launch the volume of work. So at this point, we are anticipating full cost recovery from the project.
Good. Thank you. Got to answer your question?
Yeah.
Perfect. I think it's a great idea, by the way. So I think that's really cool. And then finally, item C, Councilmember Olson, which is the funding partnership with Washington County for land acquisition at the former Mississippi Dunes Golf Course.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm actually going to ask for your help on this one a little bit, and, and maybe even the staff. So first, with respect to this specific issue, which is funding for land acquisition at the former Mississippi Dunes Golf Course, you know, we've, we've chatted about this as a council and staff, and in partnership with Washington County for quite some time. Now, this funding comes from legacy funding, and I believe there are some restrictions relative to legacy funding dollars, and when you use those, sort of what you need to do in, in terms of following the rules in order to be allowed to use that funding. Is that accurate, Jennifer?
Mayor, members of the council, yes. It's the preservation of water quality, woodlands, and other natural resources. So that's really the mission and vision behind those funds.
Okay. So if we were to use these funds to acquire some of this property, are we able to quote-unquote "develop" a park in this area that, that would be similar to other neighborhood or community parks that we see around the territory, or would we need to do something different?
Mayor, members of the council, I think I'm going to step back just a little bit in time, because I do want to say that Washington County has been at the table in our discussions on this property from almost a year ago. And I, I know the mayor's probably nodding because he remembers that, that phone call. And the county is very committed to partnering with us and ensuring that what plan we want to bring forth is consistent with their plans and visions. And I think this is the perfect representation of a partnership. We're seeing their interest in preserving wetlands and woodlands, and our desire to do the same, and also bring residents access to the river, which they have not had. And so I really have to say, this is about a partnership. We have the same vision, we have the same desire and commitment, and we have been aligned with our county partners since day one. And so I think this is really an exciting opportunity. As all of you know, I'm going to put a little plug in for our open house tomorrow night from 4:30 to 6:30, that folks can come and engage with us on our master plan in the Mississippi Dunes Golf Course. And the beautiful thing of that is, the feedback that we get will be important as we shape that vision. And then when that vision is complete, we can now go to Washington County and say, this is the vision that we have for this area and our community. And now, let us, let's find the money, and let's find the solutions to bring this forth. And so that's kind of a little bit of the history and where we're going in regards to that.
Thank you. And, and while we're on the topic of, you know, working with our partners at Washington County, which we do frequently, and this is, Mayor, where I'm going to need some of your help. You know, there's been a lot of conversation in the media and on social media, et cetera, about the American Recovery Plan, and the fact that the federal government distributed significant funding to lots of governmental agencies around the country as part of the American Recovery Plan. And I believe Washington County got somewhere in the neighborhood of $51 million. Mayor, I know you recently had a meeting with county staff with regard to potentially some projects in our area that would be eligible for that kind of funding. And, you know, there was recently an article in the, in the Pioneer Press about some of that funding being used to facilitate some road projects and some infrastructure projects in Stillwater for a development in Stillwater. And I'm just wondering if, you know, we've seen or, or experienced some of that partnership on our end with regard to the ARP funding, which I know isn't this funding, this is a different bucket of money. But, you know, we, we work very closely with the leaders at Washington County. We, you know, we try very hard to, to create those partnerships where those partnerships are available to us. And, you know, we rely very heavily on the leadership of the board, and Kevin Corbin and his staff, and Wayne Sandberg, the engineer. So I just wondered if maybe you could spend a moment or two, because you're much more involved in this than I am, with regard to that ARP funding, that $51 million. I believe the article in the Pioneer Press said something to the effect of $40 million or so have already been allocated, but I don't know if any of that's been allocated to us, or if there's a plan moving forward to, you know, utilize some of that funding, because we've got some pretty big projects coming online.
Yeah. So I, I guess what I would do is, I'm actually going to kind of look to our administrator too a little bit, but we did have a meeting, it's a couple of weeks ago, I believe, with our staff and actually our county commissioner is in the back tonight, Wayne Johnson, to discuss one particular road project, which is 100th Street. And one of our desires, if you will, from the, the staff is, just so that the public is aware, 100th Street actually going all the way to Gray Cloud Island through different pieces of it is a county road. And in that county road, they had, in the last couple of years, and I'm going to look at that two years, right? They had funded a study to kind of look at what is going to be the future access all the way down to Gray Cloud Island, with the understanding, and a little inside stuff here, that eventually there'll be some significant park on the island itself. And so in some way, shape, or form, we're going to need to be able to get traffic down there. Can't go underwater like sometimes the bridge does, so there's all those issues we've got to deal with. Then the county knows that, too. And so they did the study, we talked about the, the, the direction the road should go, and came to that agreement, both the city of Cottage Grove and the county. And so that, that study was done, workshops were done, everything was done. We have some development now that's happening along 100th Street in a variety of areas, whether it's housing developments or an upcoming proposal by North Point. Whereas these developments, we are going to be taking some of the dollars, if you will, that are being created by these, these developments, and completing portions of that county road. So in other words, we're going to bring it up to the standards that are needed, that the county has shared with us, that that's how they want it to. And that's everything from the, the size of the road, the type of the road, trails, spacing, you know, that's a big one that the county talks to us a lot about, spacing between intersections and so on. What we're asking for, since we're kind of covering, in a variety of ways, we're kind of covering everything from, in essence, Hadley all the way to Idea, a little bit further, maybe almost to Jamaica, that there is an opportunity for us to work with the county on getting additional funding to complete that roadway stretch that's going to go to Innovation Road, which we just, which is the, kind of Route 19, I guess is the, for the best way to put it for the public. And the idea there is, as more development is happening out there, more residential too, but mainly the, the business park expansion, we want to take some of that traffic, for sure, off of local streets, and secondly, off of Jamaica, because we do know that as this continues to develop, if we push all trucks and, and residential onto Jamaica Avenue down there, it's going to be a mess. Secondly, is people will and can take a road to get from 100th Street, which in essence dumps them out in front of 3M, and it's right at a railroad crossing. So there's a challenge with access piling up, could be accidents, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things. So what we're asking for, and I think at some point here, the, the city will be looking at a resolution, I'll be asking for the council, to have the county support our goal to work with them to get that stretch of road completed, at least to some point, so we can, it doesn't even have to be, there's different pieces of that road that involve going either over or under a railroad track, as an example. There's a variety of ways that we've looked at where each part is a different, a dollar amount. But there is an opportunity, we believe, to come to an agreement, hopefully, to get this particular project done. At this point, this project is not even on their five-year CIP plan.
Now, is this the same project that we had county staff in about, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago in the training room, and they...
Yes.
Okay, so they've been looking at this for a while?
Oh, yeah, and, and that's why I'm saying with our developments, our, we've actually been working with them on making sure that whatever we develop along that roadway stretch, you know, with our develop, whoever's developing, like North Point and such, that the road structure is going to be sufficient for what's needed, that the county is not going to have to pay for that. That would be borne by the developers. And Jennifer mentioned that comment not too long ago about development pays for development. This is one of those examples where the development is going to be paying for some of this infrastructure.
So Jennifer, on that note, you know, we talked about the fact that the legacy funding comes with specific requirements, basically. And I'm assuming ARP funding is the same. And I know, at least in the article I read in the Pioneer Press, there was some debate about the funding that, that was designated to that development in Stillwater, I think it was, and whether or not it sort of qualified. And ultimately, you know, the people who are smarter than me looked at it and said, yep, it qualifies. So is what we're talking about, does that qualify for the ARP funding?
Well, Mayor, members of the council, as everybody knows, anything with the American Rescue Funds can be a little bit complicated, and they did put a very tight box around how the funds could be used. And so the plan that you outlined, that the county has in place, did provide for their $40 million within the guidelines of, of the plan. The roadway specific is not necessarily an eligible cost. So the key thing is, is, you know, in working with the county, who is really a strong partner, as we have talked about developments along the corridor, because that study that they came and presented at, we've been implementing it. You know, so when you saw Settlers Bluff come in, that road alignment was consistent with that. When you look at the master plan in the Mississippi Dunes area down by the river, that's consistent with that plan. When you look at renewal by Anderson and the expansion, that is consistent with their plan. And the actual application that North Point has put forth is all consistent with that plan. And so it has taken a lot of time and interaction between the city and county staff to ensure that everything that we're doing on the development side is absolutely consistent with that plan. And this is, I think, really the strong support that is a partnership. And I, I can say that city staff is meeting with county staff on Friday to talk about this road alignment, and how can it be programmed? You know, because sometimes the pot, one pot of money is not the best solution, and maybe there are other solutions to fund it. But obviously, anytime a county wants to program a road project, they need to ensure they have the right of way. Because if they're going to allocate dollars and set it aside, they need to absolutely ensure that there's deliverability in it. And so what we've been doing is working with 3M to ensure that we can work to get that right of way, secure it, and then be able to give the county a commitment that that road right of way would be available, and we can start working on those solutions. And I am confident that our staff and the county staff are going to be able to come to a conclusion. And, you know, timing isn't always perfect. So maybe when they submit their CIP plan, this project, we may have slipped in a little too late, and so it may be something that we're going to have to provide a comment on if it didn't make it before they went to print, per se. So that's something that we can still have that opportunity in November to do. But I think there's always ways to creatively look at solutions and find the right pot of money that works for a project. And so I don't see that the county is unwilling to engage in that. So we will continue that partnership and find ways to find solutions.
And that's kind of the resolution you were talking about, is when we come to some sort of an understanding, then we can put together that resolution. And I know that the county is fully aware, you know, Cottage Grove's the second biggest city in the county. We, we contribute an awful lot to the county, and the county contributes an awful lot back. And that leadership that we're talking about by our board members and, and by the staff up there, in combination with sort of our objectives and goals, you know, that's what makes those projects come online, and it's a pretty beautiful thing when it works out. So I'm glad to hear that there's still some dialogue there. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess, I'll just pop in two quick comments. One is, you know, one of the interesting things with this North Point development, and again, it had, the, the official proposal hasn't been given to us yet. Matter of fact, she made the plug for tomorrow night. There is a North Point neighborhood meeting next Tuesday evening here at City, no, Hero Center, I'm sorry, Hero Center. And so the idea behind that is that we want to give the opportunity for the public. But what I did want to share is that the city, the portion of the possible taxes for this particular situation would be about $1 million to the city, and I think it's about that to us, too, and then more than that to the school district. So it is quite a benefit, if you will, to make that happen. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And then second, secondly, did you, county commissioner, did you want to speak?
If I could.
Absolutely. And then I'll just mention one quick thing, and then I'll let Mr. Johnson speak. The one question I was going to comment on, I'm assuming that the county CIP is very similar to a city CIP, where you can put, and maybe Commissioner Johnson, you can put it in... And I think it's about that to us, too, and then more than that to the school district. So it is quite a benefit, if you will, to make that happen. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And then secondly, did you, county commissioner, did you want to speak?
If I could.
Absolutely. And then I'll just mention one quick thing and then I'll let Mr. Johnson speak. The one question I was going to comment on, I'm assuming that the county CIP is very similar to a city CIP where you can put, and maybe Commissioner Johnson, you can put it in there, too, where sometimes projects don't come to fruition or things get moved around. So I know we try to put a plan out there, like the city does, but sometimes those plans don't always, either they come forward or they move back or whatever. Is that kind of the same thing that goes on with the county?
Mayor, council members, you're exactly right. And I just wanted to come up here and Councilmember Olson, I had mentioned in the past, if you have questions like this, I've offered for you to reach out to me to answer these so you can get these answered as soon as you can. You had, you're discussing multiple level things going on. And one of the first things is what you're acting on tonight is the request has to come from the city to the county. So we're not down here saying, telling you what you're going to be doing. We're waiting for those requests and then we enact on it. The ARPA funds are, the city got ARPA funds, and so the criteria is pretty much along the same lines. There's multiple levels, you know, including equity and what you're using for those funds. And one of the projects that I'm very proud of that I'm getting done here earlier, a number of years earlier, is even the boat ramp that's at the St. Croix Bluffs, because that's a safety issue for public safety. It's an equity. We have a lot of people that use that that don't have the money to go into their own access to the river. That's one of those things that we're able to use that for. So I was, you know, happy to get that done for people. But the legacy funds was a voter option that was done many years ago. So that money goes in there every year. And then basically, different projects come up. We have a lot of projects up in the north area of the county that go in. Why? Because that's more open, you know, a lot more populated down here. So if the county, a person comes to the county, they says, we have this land, maybe somebody wants to sell their land and they want to see something happen to it other than development. There is a criteria that comes to us that is it's different, is there possibly animals there? Is there waterway? Is there a reason to do it? And then basically go through the application. And then from that point on, you then look at it with what are the different funds? You have, the county comes in and works with the person and gets an appraisal. So what's the value there and stuff? Met council gets involved, DNR gets involved, the legacy funds come in. Because one of the things we do at the county to make this legacy money last as far as possible is, an example, 25% will come out of the legacy fund. Another chunk will come from the Met Council and then the DNR. So basically, we try to make that last as long as possible so we can purchase as much as we can. And then you decide who's going to watch over that land. So one of the requests was, as you're working on tonight, is say, we have a section of property down here that we feel will qualify for that. Once that goes through, your Jennifer has been working already with our Jennifer, but they continue to work together to start working through that application process. We have June that works with the legacy programs. And I know I brought, this got brought up in that meeting we had. And that night, actually, I had a park and open space meeting, and I actually brought it to their attention. So they were prepared for you to reach out. So that's one thing that happens. And we're always, the county's always looking to put more land into items like this. And then how you can use that land, there is criteria. You can't just do whatever you want with it. There is certain criteria, because it's preservation for the future. So then you have the ARPA funds. One of the, you brought up the ARPA funds, you brought up the article. There's a reason that article got out there, but it was Oak Park Heights is the one that, where that's going in. Now, the, what, there's a road that's going to go through there, that's going to help with a hospital going in, it's going to make safety better for the schools, because it actually avoids some of the main area, which is 36, which is, we all know is a bad situation right now, and we're spending a lot of time at the county trying to make safe. So basically, they looked at this road there and said, there's many reasons for this. And they qualified it under ARPA. The other option was not TIF, but abatement, which then would have put it back on, you know, the taxpayers. So he said, this was a better use for it. And yes, about 40 million's been used, there's about 10 million left. That would be one of them. And then basically, cities can reach out to us if they have projects that qualify for that. Now, that road for the arterial that we had discussed, that's not really going to be, I don't, we don't believe, fit within that criteria there. However...
ARPA, you mean?
The ARPA.
No.
The ARPA. However, that was basically a, you talked about that with the discussion, and that was really a 10-year plan that we are looking at. In other words, we have that discussion, where's your development? Development's happening faster than anybody envisioned. That's project that came into you and made it. So basically, we had that discussion, can we and how do we advance that? Again, the request was made, we start working with you. And there will have to be more of an official request at that point for us to start discussing it. And then I start working with the other commissioners. Because yes, we have our own districts, yes, we fight for our own districts, but we fight for the county. And so then we go in there and start looking, how do we find funding? Is there ways to find funding so we can make our money last and make it as, make the money go as long as possible, or as far as possible? So basically, that is a discussion. And you had asked about CIP. Yes, just like the city, things come up that need to be done now. We all know some projects don't happen when there's, when you plan on doing it, and then some projects do happen. Example is a ravine park down here. That was supposed to be years down the road yet, but we were able to get that done last year. So that was an example of how we move up something. So if that request is made, if there's justification, if it's an existing project that was already going to be done down the road, but it needs to be done now for a particular reason, then we can start working together and see how that money can happen, this money. The good thing is, through the action of the board with sales tax, extra sales tax that was added on, we now have some freedom to pay for things without always having to come back to the taxpayers for more money, levy it, and count on the state. As we all know, the state is not playing their part. We talked about unfunded mandates earlier. I thought I was at a board meeting, because we discussed about that all the time, because so much of our budget is affected by unfunded mandates. So, and so that is what we're able to do moving forward. So I just, if you have other questions, I'd love to answer them right now. But the first thing is the ask, the working through me, working through the staff, the staff works together, and then we figure out how we can get these things done. Because we all know things are moving fast now, everywhere. And Cottage Grove isn't the only one that is saying, we need to start moving faster because things are happening. So.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Nope, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for sharing.
Mayor, I'll move consent.
All right, so we have a motion to approve consent by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Yes, it's been a little while, but if you're here for anything that was on tonight's consent calendar, they've all been approved. Number eight is approved disbursements, A is pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Well, now we're going to get into public hearings, and we do have a few this evening. Our first public hearing is the 2021 pavement management project assessment hearing, and Amanda Meyer is going to take us through this, so welcome, Amanda.
Good afternoon or evening, Mayor Bailey.
Felt like it, didn't it? It's been a long day.
It's been a long day. So as mentioned, the next item on the agenda is the assessment hearing for the 2021 pavement management project. Just a real quick, brief history, our program started back in 1994. Since then, we've completed about 91 miles of roadway and approximately 7,600 assessments. So the project in 2021 did encompass a couple of different areas throughout the city, including Jamaica Avenue from 80th Street to Indian Boulevard. That was a spot curb replacement, full pavement replacement, and some minor utility repairs. Some work at Arbor Meadows Park, including spot curb replacement and full pavement replacement in the parking lot, as well as the addition of a trail around the ball field, a shelter as well as a play court. And then some improvements down at the River Oaks Golf Course, spot curb replacement, full pavement replacement, minor utility repairs, as well as some lighting upgrades. The purpose of tonight's meeting is really to focus on the three neighborhood areas that were included in the project this year. So East Meadow Cliff, Pine Meadow, and Sandy Hills. Again, scope of the work was the spot curb replacement, full pavement replacement, and some minor utility repairs. So just some before and after pictures of each of these neighborhoods. So in East Meadow Cliff, these roads were constructed back in 1991. You can see in the before pictures, some asphalt stripping, some cracking in the pavement, some major distresses in the roadways. And then looking at the Sandy Hills neighborhood, constructed back in 1997 and 1998, as well as the Pine Meadows neighborhood, which was constructed in various phases between '92 and '96. Again, you see those same distresses in the pavement here on those before pictures. So looking at the funding breakdown of this project, total project cost was about $4 million. A portion of those project costs are coming out of the utility funds. We have about $300,000 for park improvements, about $450,000 for the River Oaks Golf Course, about $2 million out of the general levy. And then the total for the assessments is $868, sorry, $868,925.91. So looking more specifically at those assessments, the properties highlighted in blue are those properties being assessed as part of this project. There are 256 of those properties. The estimated assessment was just over $4,000 prior to the project beginning, and that was supported by the special benefit appraisal that was completed prior to the project. We have seen some cost savings from indirect costs as well as construction costs, which has brought that assessment down to $3,394.24, which over a period of 15 years with interest averages an annual payment of $282.19. So just to go through just the process of the assessment, so if the assessment is paid by November 15th of this year, there's no interest charged. The assessment can be payable over a period of 15 years with interest, and that interest rate would be 3%. There is partial payment allowed with a minimum of $500. And then deferral is available. If a property owner qualifies, then we just ask a property owner to reach out directly to our finance department if they have questions about that deferral process and qualifications. So with that, I'll leave the recommendations and stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Amanda? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Is welcome to do so at this time. Anybody at all? All right, I'll close the public hearing and council will look for a motion.
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 2021-125, adopting the assessment role for the 2021 pavement management project.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Amanda. Next is B, which is hazardous property assessments, and our finance director, Robin Rowland, will take us through this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Figure out how to turn this off. Oh, I did, okay. It's only distracting me. This is my, this is my annual trip to the podium to discuss hazardous properties. A hazardous property is a code enforcement issue within the city, which has been determined to be necessary to be resolved. This is under State Statute 463. We have the ability to assess the costs of that project, that removal of the hazardous properties problems, basically. The ability to assess that against the property and have it be repaid to the city over the course of a year at a particular rate of interest. During the course of 2021, one property rose to this level. This hazardous property had a tree removed, and it was a required abatement by the code enforcement area. The tree was removed, the charges were given to the property owner, they were not paid, and therefore they are currently on this list of properties to be assessed in 2022. We are required to hold a public hearing. We were also required to publish this in the paper and did so on September 22nd and September 29th. And the assessment notice was mailed to the property owner. At this time, I would ask that you hold the property, I'm sorry, that you hold the public hearing, and at the close of that public hearing, if there are no objections, that you adopt the Resolution 2021-124, adopting assessments for hazardous conditions removal.
All right. Any questions for Robin on this? All right, I will then go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Is welcome to do so at this time. They're all smiling at me because there's hardly anybody out there. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and council will look for a motion on this one.
Mayor, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2021-124, adopting assessments for hazardous conditions removal.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And Robin, you get to stay there because the next one is tall weeds assessments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tall weeds assessments come under City Ordinance 431 for noxious weeds and plants. This is basically when the code enforcement officer goes out and finds properties either on their volition or reported by others, that grass and weeds are taller than the required limits. Once that happens, the code enforcement officer notifies the property owner that they are in violation of this particular state statute and city ordinance. And they, the property owner has a period of time to resolve the issue. If it is not resolved, the city goes ahead and basically mows their grass for them and then proceeds to charge them for the cost of that mowing plus additional fees. If those invoices are not paid to the city, the city has the option of assessing those against the offending properties for the coming year. During the course of the year, we sent 62 letters to property owners for violation of the city's noxious weeds and plants ordinance. The six properties that are in front of you this evening are those that did not respond and did not pay. Consequently, we are asking you this evening to certify them as assessments against these properties for the pay 2022 year end. So I would ask that you hold the public hearing, and if there are no objections after that public hearing, that you adopt Resolution 2021-123, adopting assessments for the tall weed removal.
All right. Any questions for Robin? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, too. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this particular item? Is welcome to do so at this time. All right, seeing nobody out there, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I can make the motion to adopt Resolution 2021-123, adopting assessments for tall weed removal.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Councilmember Thede. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. Awesome. All right, we are moving right along here. The next public hearing this evening is Hinton Woods, which is the Eastman Vacation. And Mike Morosola, I almost did the goofy that time, sorry. Mike, you're on and welcome again.
Poor Mike.
I know, I feel so bad for him. We had this conversation earlier about some names I just have fun with. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's all right, Emily called me Mark earlier.
Oh, there, so I don't feel so bad then, thank you.
I get Jason all the time, so don't sweat it.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. So tonight, we have one, two of them presenting. The first one is utility easement vacation at Hinton Woods. This does require a public hearing. The property is located at the intersection of 65th Street South and Hinton Avenue. Previously, the council approved D.R. Horne to construct 61 single-family homes and 104 townhome units on the property. A little more background, there are some utilities that went through the site, and previously, the council did vacate one easement at their August 4th, 2021 meeting. However, there was another easement... meeting. However, there was another easement on the property that was owned by the county. The county did receive an application request to vacate that. In turn, the county did transfer back to the city to vacate it at their August 24th meeting, and now it's in front of us tonight to vacate that formally. As you can see on the screen here, we did vacate the one that's striped, and then the yellow one is the one that's in front of us tonight. As part of the Hinton Woods development, the utilities will be rerouted through public right-of-way, and the right-of-way and the easement around the pond will be enlarged to accommodate the proposed ponding on-site as well. And the recommendation is on the screen. First, we need to hold a public hearing, and then adopt Resolution 2021-129.
All right, any questions for Mike on this one? All right, on this one, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this one? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-129, vacating one permanent easement within the Hinton Woods development.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Mills.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And one more for you, Mike?
Yep, one second.
And this is the Apodan easement vacations.
Not sure what's going on.
Don't you love technical issues?
Yeah. There we go. All right. Thank you, Mayor, again. I'm back. Apodan has requested to some easement vacations. Apodan Development received approval previously to construct a 171-unit apartment building, known as Cottage Grove Apartments. The approvals took place on May 11th, 2021. During the closing title review, the closer identified there was two easements on the property that needed to be vacated. They were in favor of the city of Cottage Grove. These easements were noted as right-of-way easements, and the city has no future need for them. So tonight, we're requesting vacation of these easements. So the closing process and the project can move forward. Again, the staff is recommending the council take the following actions: hold a public hearing, and then adopt Resolution 2021-128.
All right. Any questions, council, on this one? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item at all? Is welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll look for a motion.
I'll go ahead and move we adopt Resolution 2021-128, vacating two easements for roadway purposes as described in the attached resolution on property located between Hardwood and Harkness Avenues for the Apodan apartment development.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
All right, 10 is business, bid awards, there are none, and now we'll move to 11, which is the regular agenda. We do have two items this evening. The first one is the View Apartments or Harkness Apartments, and Emily Smith will take us through this. So welcome, Emily.
Good evening, Mayor Bailey, members of the council. The next item before you this evening is actually three applications submitted by Palli Builders, rezoning site plan review, as well as a preliminary plat. The proposed parcel or site is located in between Hardwood Avenue and Harkness Avenue, just north of most recently approved project from Apodan, as you're probably more familiar with. The parcel is wooded with a little bit of green space near the Harkness end. Currently, the parcel is zoned a mix of R2 residential estate and UR urban reserve, so it's a little bit of a unique situation. The applicant is proposing to rezone the parcel to R6, which is our high-density residential zoning district with the PUD to allow for just a little bit of flexibility. That we'll talk more in depth as we move along. But this proposed rezoning does align with our land use plan, which does guide this particular parcel for high density. As mentioned, it is, actually, I didn't mention it, the proposed project is a 31-unit apartment building. It is proposed to be three stories in height and is proposed to be a market-rate project. The applicant is proposing, with direction from staff, to access only off of Hardwood Avenue. As you might have recalled, lots of conversations with the Apodan project to the south focused on keeping traffic off of Harkness Avenue at this time until the area continues to develop a little bit more. Let's force that traffic out to Hardwood Avenue to keep it away from the existing residences on Harkness Avenue until we see that development and start to plan what that future road alignment does look like. And with that, we will in fact require, similar to the Apodan project, turn lanes, right and left turn lanes off of Hardwood Avenue, so that will work through with the project. We're hoping to coordinate with the project to the south to avoid impacts of traffic flow on Hardwood Avenue, as both of those construction projects are most likely going to be taking place at the same time. So just know we're taking that into consideration as we plan. The proposed project is in fact meeting the city's minimum standards when it comes to setbacks. This particular applicant has been very conscientious of the 100-foot setback from neighboring residentially zoned properties. So as you can see, they are meeting that 100-foot setback from the property to the north, as well as the property on the other side of Harkness Avenue to the east. And then, of course, they are meeting that setback to the south property line as well. The applicant is meeting the city's minimum standards for parking, with underground parking as well as surface parking, so they're meeting that as well. In addition to the site plan, the project does require preliminary plat. With this, it does a couple of different things. Specifically, it kind of cleans up the parcel as it sits today. If you do look at it today, it's got this goofy little, I keep calling it a finger, it's a technical planning term, but, so they will essentially be dedicating this as right-of-way, so it will be Harkness right-of-way, which will align with Harkness in the right-of-way that we have collected, for lack of a better way to put it, to the south. As this area continues to develop, we want to have that right-of-way so we have the ability to either center Harkness the best that we can, as it does sit currently, just a little goofy in that right-of-way. Secondly, with the plat, the city will be acquiring a 25-foot easement on the southerly property line. This will allow for the potential of an extension of a sewer line in the future, depending if we need that connection to the line that runs in Hardwood Avenue. And third, we just want to make sure that we're maintaining that private access to the property owner to the north, so making sure that we have conditioned that that access easement is maintained. As with all of our projects, we do require a true mitigation plan be submitted. In this particular situation, the developer is proposing to remove just a bit over the maximum permitted amount per ordinance. Therefore, they are required to mitigate. In this case, they are proposing to mitigate by planting additional trees on the site to make up for those additional trees that they are removing. They are also meeting the minimum landscape requirements within the city's zoning code, but I want to make specific mention that they are proposing a double row of coniferous trees along the north property line. I know the developer and the property owner to the north have been in communication over the last handful of months, and I know this developer is dedicated to making sure that that property owner receives the screening that they would like to see there to kind of mitigate the impacts of their existing property. I know they will continue to be in communication. The city will, of course, continue to be in touch with both parties as well to make sure that that screening is maintained as the project continues. And in addition, lighting plan is also required with all of our projects, and as you can see, the applicant's onsite lighting is not impacting outside of their property line. The applicant is proposing a mix of brickstone and glass in the exterior materials, as well as some hardy siding. With similar projects that we have recently had before you in the city, this particular project is proposing about 46% Class 1 materials on their exterior facade, which is just over similar projects in the, the Legends Grove 80 and other projects like this. So with that being said, they are also wanting to propose the peaked roof to create an individual project, just a little bit unique to the area, a little bit different than the already proposed project, but also blending in. And with the PUD, the applicant is requesting just a bit, an additional height on their building greater than 35 feet, which is the maximum permitted by the zoning code. So with that PUD, we allow for a little bit of flexibility when it comes to that height. So with that, we ask for the additional Class 1 materials on the exterior of the building, as well as the image that you see before you, which is a little bit of an elevation to give an idea of what this building will look like, what it will feel like from Hardwood Avenue, from Harkness Avenue, and in relation to the already approved project to the south. So I just wanted to provide this particular image to better understand, given the elevation difference, those two projects will align quite nicely from those right-of-way. And finally, I will touch quickly on the current trends of the development in this particular area, and how staff is kind of taking a look at what we thought was going to happen, what's happening, and how we look at this as we move forward. So just a little background you probably are all very familiar, but in 2017, council approved a resolution that took a look at about 55 acres in this area and said, you know what, let's guide it a little bit of a higher density, higher density, medium density, and this met their strategic goal to provide lifecycle housing in the city of Cottage Grove, and this was one of those areas identified to support that. With that, at the time, the development was, thought that it would kind of come as a whole, right? All of these parcels would develop. We're seeing that that isn't necessarily the case, as each parcel is developing on its own. So what does this look like? So we've had a couple of scenarios put together, specifically, how does Harkness align, I think is the biggest question. How do we look at that? How do we plan for that? What does that look like? And unfortunately, from a staff perspective, we can't necessarily give you a very clear answer, but we can certainly show you some different options and kind of give an idea to think about that as we move forward. So the existing image is showing you the approved project, the views, which is the project before you this evening, and then the remaining four parcels on the west side of Harkness Avenue, and what those might look like. And as you can see, we've pushed the access for future development onto Harkness Avenue, given the city's stormwater pond, which runs along Hardwood Avenue, restricting access that direction. Again, scenario B, but gives a little bit of a jog in Harkness Avenue, for lack of a better way to put it. Maybe a developer comes in and is interested in developing that entire medium density on that east side of Harkness Avenue. Maybe they're able to adjust Harkness, certainly an option. And again, another option, we have a couple of roundabouts. Maybe we still have two accesses on Harkness Avenue, but it looks a little bit different as a developer puts together an assemblage with these parcels. And again, I can't make, you know, more clear that this is, these are just potentials, options. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but I think this helps us to give an idea, especially to know that as this area develops, yes, the access will be on Harkness Avenue, and yes, we'll have to do a deeper dive if we continue to see some more projects coming along this corridor and understand better how we need to evaluate Harkness Avenue in the future. So with that, I have two recommendations before you this evening. I am available for questions, but I know the applicant is here as well to answer any additional specific questions about the project you might have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Emily at this point? All right, thank you, Emily. The applicant, would you like to speak at all?
Not at all.
Nope, you're okay. Counsel, have any questions for the applicant? All right, so what I'll do then is this is, oh, no, it isn't, it isn't a public hearing, I apologize. I almost was, I was so crazy with doing public hearings this night. So council, if there's no questions or comments, there is two items before us for recommendation by staff. What would council like to do?
Mayor, I'll make motion.
Okay.
To adopt ordinance number 1044, amending city code Title 11-1-6, zoning map to rezone certain property in Section 8 from UR urban reserve to R2 residential estate to R-6, high-density residential district with a PUD, which is planned unit development.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussion? Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to inform the rest of the council, which I'm sure will come as no surprise, that I will not be voting in favor of this resolution, nor the second resolution, for the same reasons I didn't vote for the Apodan resolutions. So that's it.
All right. Any other questions?
I'll make it.
Councilmember Thede.
Yeah, we've started precedence by doing the Apodan development, and I have to say that this development fits what I envisioned in 2017, at least a lot closer than what the Apodan development does by being closer to Hardwood and being lower in height and not standing out so much. But so while I am a little bit, you know, disappointed in how that is developing, and then we need to probably be careful what we show because we didn't display that very good, in my opinion, in 2017. But, so I just wanted to say, you know, I probably will go ahead and approve it because it's going to pass, but that I wasn't really all that happy about what is developing there, so.
Okay. Any other comments, council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one. All right, and then we have a second motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2021-127, approving the preliminary plat named Harkness Apartments, and the site plan review of a market-rate multifamily apartment building generally located on 2.91 acres of land between Hardwood Avenue and Harkness Avenue, and the site plan for a 31-units, three-story, market-rate, multifamily apartment building.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one. Thank you. Thanks, Emily. All right, the next item and final item on our regular agenda, specifically this evening, is the mobile food unit ordinance, and Joe Fishbach is going to take us through this, so welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting the mobile food unit ordinance update. As you recall, at the last council meeting, we did meet with the city attorney in workshop to discuss the mobile food unit and talked about some updates to that ordinance. So what the new ordinance allows is allows mobile food units in the industrial zoning area with written permission of the landowner at least 300 feet from the front door of a permanent food establishment, and pay the annual $350 license fee and receive the license from the city. Mobile food units are also allowed in the residential zoning area, as long as they have the permission of the landowner, are 300 feet from the front door of a permanent food establishment, pay a $20 registration fee, and mobile food units in the residential area are only allowed to be one-time per calendar year at the same residence or address. Mobile food units are not allowed in any of the business districts unless they are part of a city-approved event, such as a special event permit or a park permit, something of that nature. So this kind of shows the map of where the mobile food units would be allowed in the industrial park. So I don't know if anybody has any questions regarding that one, but, so anything in the industrial park would be fair game as long as they get the permission of the landowner. So some of the details of the ordinance, a maximum of five mobile food units would be licensed per year, so that would be the ones that would be going in the industrial park. Mobile food units that are going to residential addresses would not be included in this. Chances are likely that they would be some of the same, but doesn't necessarily have to be one of the five. And the new provisions, we talked about having a sunset period just to test it out for one year. So these new provisions would not go beyond 2022 without authorized council action. So we'd kind of do a test period next year and decide if we want to let these sunset, or if we want to memorialize these into a permanent ordinance going forward. or if we want to memorialize these into a permanent ordinance going forward. We did put some more performance standards in the ordinance for the mobile food units. The mobile food units have to be licensed by the state of Minnesota and/or Washington County. They have to meet the state fire code. Chances are pretty good that if somebody does have a mobile food unit in Cottage Grove, our fire marshal would be out to inspect that. Minimum of $1 million for each occurrence, and $2 million for aggregate. Waste and gray water must be disposed of properly, must follow the signage standards that are detailed in the ordinance, and must minimize noise, odor, and exhaust, as to not create a private or public nuisance for anybody that would be around, and also follow all other laws and regulations. So I stand for questions, and the recommendation is on the screen.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on the way it's laid out? I'll start with Councilmember Thede.
Yeah, I was trying to recall, for a residential unit, and we said just one time versus, you know, because they might have maybe a couple of parties a year, or something like that, but they can call, and they might like a particular food truck, but they can only have them once a year right now.
Yep.
Well, I guess we could see how that goes over the next year, but...
Your honor, members of the council, as we were contemplating the implementation, and actually, how this will play out for your average resident who has a graduate this year, and you want to have a graduation party, you're stuck with the five licensed mobile food vendors. And so we thought, well, that doesn't seem necessarily fair that you have to stick with one of those five in the community already. So we thought, instead, we'll allow a registration, but then we don't want somebody to just, because I have permission of this property owner, I'm going to park in front of their property every single day, and just pay my 20 bucks, however often, you know, for the summer, or something. And so we thought, maybe we should restrict it to being at that location once a year. You know, theoretically, when you go to a graduation party, oh, I loved your caterer, your mobile food unit, I want to use them for my son's graduation open house as well. So the thought is that that particular mobile food vendor might be going to various places in a residential neighborhood, but we don't want them just parked in front of one house. So again, it's, it was a thought that maybe this could be implemented this way. It seemed fair, it seemed reasonable. I'm glad it's a one-year period of time to see if this actually plays out well, but that was the rationale behind it.
Okay. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. Joe, you go back to, there you go. Good, thank you. Do we have any permanent food establishments in our industrial zone? None? Okay. So the first point, which is allow mobile food units in the industrial zoning areas with written landowner permission, and that they are at least 300 feet from the front door of a permanent food establishment, may be a bit irrelevant, because there are no permanent food establishments in the industrial zoning area. Just food for thought. The second thing is, I learned on the internet that there's a tool where you can measure distance, and that was a dangerous thing for me to learn. So what I did was, just sort of by gosh and by golly, I started looking at where are our permanent restaurants in the city. And then I sort of tried to surmise, if I were a food truck, and I wanted to park in a specific spot, even in a business district, where could I park where I wouldn't be 300 feet or less away from the front door of a permanent food establishment? And that's a kind of a hard thing to do. We have, we have lots of business areas sort of plopped in different spots where it's a little bit challenging. But then, I know we have a new food truck owner in town who had expressed an interest in working with Gee Will Liquor, and, you know, I think some of this conversation actually came from that. And I looked at where that food truck was located for a short time, because that fellow's only been in business for a month or, not a month and a half. And I looked at, was there a 300-foot or greater distance to the front door of a permanent food establishment? And in that specific spot where he was, I couldn't find a food establishment that would be considered a permanent food establishment, at least in my brain, that was less than 300 feet away. You know, I looked at the Pizza Hut, I don't know if that's a permanent food establishment, because I've never eaten inside there, but, I mean, it certainly is a food establishment, and it's brick and mortar. So if permanent is intended to mean brick and mortar, whether there's sit-down or take-out, then that would apply. But even then, 300 feet or more existed. And so I wondered if, because that circumstance is actually pretty unique, you know, the reality is, it actually is a little bit hard to find a spot in the business district that's 300 feet or more away from the front door of a permanent food establishment, because we have a lot of fast feeders in town and stuff. Would we maybe want to consider, as a council, you know, revisiting the idea that we wouldn't just allow industrial zoning, but we may allow some business-zoned areas that are within that 300 feet? And it made me think about, you know, we have our liquor ordinance where I think it's 1,000 feet, you know, from one establishment to another establishment, and maybe there would be some more consistency with that. And so I wanted to ask Corey, are you familiar of any cities that do that, that allow for these trucks to be in business areas, but then they establish a, I guess, a perimeter that they can't really violate? I know West St. Paul, for example, I mean, the one fellow sits right outside in front of Home Depot. I don't know if there's any other food establishments there, but, you know, that's kind of where I was thinking.
Yep. Your honor, members of the council, as I think I mentioned at the work session, every single city addresses them differently, and every council kind of has a different philosophy in whether or not they want to embrace food trucks, or regulate food trucks. And what we've found is that most cities use performance standards, instead of trying to use the must-be-within, you know, so far-from permanent food establishments, or restaurants, I think is what they generally term them, but there aren't a lot of distance restrictions. It's more performance standards, can't be in the same spot, can't be located on a public street, those kinds of regulations, as opposed to a distance from a permanent food establishment.
But the verbiage as written now would allow for a food truck owner to find a home, so to speak, in the industrial zoning area with written landowner permission, where they could operate for the entire season if they pay their, if they pay their fee, and then they can serve the public. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other comments on this one? So the only, the only comment that, and I know we talked about this kind of at length at the workshop, you know, we're trying to figure, this is kind of new for us, and as this council is very keenly aware, we have had some business owners, or I'll say restaurant owners, who had concerns as it relates to food trucks being too close to their entrance, which is kind of why we came up with this intent of, okay, how do we address that, and negate that concern? I guess the best thing, you know, I think that we can do at this point, firstly, is we intentionally put the sunset clause in here, because we want to see how this thing goes, and to see what some of the food trucks do, and what some of the establishments feel as we go forward. And so I will be very interested, from a staff's perspective, as we go into next year, to kind of see how this all pans out, and to hear from some of our, because we do have local food truck owners that live in Cottage Grove, and to see exactly how they handle the situation, and, you know, what we might need to do to possibly change things into the future. So that's kind of where we're at, at this point. So there is a motion before us to pass a new ordinance that would change our current ordinance, but that was fairly restrictive, I guess I'd just say it, to loosen it up a bit.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 1045, amending city code Title III, Chapter 13, and the city fee table regarding mobile food units.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. All right, next on our agenda is council comments request. We will start with Councilmember Mills.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pass tonight, thank you.
All right, sounds good. And then we'll move on to Councilmember Dennis.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Couple things here for us this evening. The first of which is a community event that's going to be held this coming Saturday, which is October 9th, the annual spaghetti dinner and sports persons and more raffle. This is being put on by the Acacia Masonic Lodge, number 51, located at 70th Street and Lamar Avenue, in the east side of Cottage Grove. This event will be going on from 4 until 7 p.m. I'm not going to apologize for making people hungry with what I'm about to say. So they have some of the best spaghetti that you'll have. Wonderful meat sauce, garlic bread, coffee, milk, lemonade, assorted desserts, and the prices are really, really reasonable. So adults can eat for $8, kids 12 and under, $5, and if you've got a child under three, they eat absolutely for free. And then there's also going to be a raffle drawing that's going on at 6 o'clock, and an opportunity to win a number of sporting good prizes, including a 55-inch LED flat-screen UHD TV. And so the money that's raised from this for the Masons goes to a number of really good causes, including fundraisers, or I should say scholarships for some local kids to go to college, that type of thing. So money is also kicked up to the Shriners Hospital for children. So it's a great event, again, October 9th, 4 to 7 p.m., at the Masonic Lodge 51. The second thing I want to take a moment to talk about, we're getting closer and closer to this, is on Friday, October 22nd, from 4 to 11 p.m., at the St. Paul Park, American Legion Post 98, in St. Paul Park, there's a fundraiser, which is called Come Out of the Storm, and that will be benefiting Patrick Nickel, who's on our police department here in Cottage Grove, and he's also a retired military member. He lost his home to fire. And so what a lot of friends and supporters are doing is having a fundraiser for him to help. There's going to be now six different bands that'll be performing during the course of the event, some fantastic food, various fun events, including some raffles. All proceeds will go to Patrick to help him and his family to rebuild his home. And then the last thing I'm going to talk about, folks may notice that I'm wearing yellow, Councilmember Olson is wearing yellow tonight, he and I are both members of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Group that supports our area. And so there are times when we share messaging that isn't necessarily happy messaging. So there really is no degree of eloquence that I can summon to properly outline the meaning of someone's life, or the importance of their contributions. We lost a very special individual, her name was Jody, Judy Gengel, and she's someone that has been very, very prominent in the area, not just in Cottage Grove, but St. Paul Park and Newport. A tremendous, tremendous volunteer, and a very special soul, who has given in an amazing way, both to the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon family, also served substantially on the Board of Directors for what used to be called Stone Soup Thrift Shop, which is the Friends in Need organization currently in it. So there's, there's a lot of people very affected by this loss, tremendous loss, and so I just want to take a moment to share our appreciation for the difference that she has made, being truly a person of inspiration, giving back selflessly in so many ways. It's incredible. So she will definitely be very much missed. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that unfortunate news. Councilmember Thede?
All right, I've got one item. The 2021 Monster Bash Parade is on. So October 30th, the lineup will begin at 8 p.m. And again, it's, it's by the District Administration Center, it'll run down to by Applebee's. And so the, if you go to www.cottagegrostrawberryfest.com, there is, if you want to be in the parade, you can fill out the form to be in the parade, and it's going to be a great time, as usual. Couple different, different things on here that, to take into account that we're asking people to do. And the registration deadline is October 20th. So, again, it's, it'll be on Saturday, October 30th, with a lineup beginning at 8 a.m., going from the, I guess here it says the Service Center, I had called it the Admin Center before, and then down to Applebee's, or the District Program Center there by Country and Suites, you know where all that stuff is. So, but yeah, if you have any questions, you can always contact me, or contact anybody on the Strawberry Fest committee. Let's see, anything else in here that I should tell you? I think that that takes care of it. You'll see all the information right there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, my compliments to my colleague, Steve Dennis, for his very kind words about Judy. I'm a believer that in virtually every situation that we experience in our life, you can learn something. And I often look for the lesson. What is the lesson? Even when you have a really terrible experience, there's typically a lesson you can learn. The lesson that I think Judy taught us all is, Judy was a person who was challenged by physical ailments. She was somebody who, you know, she wasn't, you know, overly wealthy when it comes to, you know, money in the bank, and those kinds of things. But what she had in abundance was just an incredible strength of spirit, and a really positive attitude. And despite some of the challenges that she dealt with on a daily basis physically, she was the first one to raise her hand, to step up and volunteer. And she always did so with a smile on her face. You know, she, she challenged our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon president, Ray Kane, who's just a phenomenal human being, if you know Ray, you know that already. But she even challenged Ray to, to take on more, because she wanted to, she wanted to chip in and pitch in. And the thing that, I guess, you know, Judy taught me is, you know, you have a choice each day, when you wake up, on how you're going to approach your day. You have a choice in each situation, in how you're going to approach the situation. You know, the only person you really control is you, and Judy was one of those people who, you know, she wasn't, she wasn't looking for reasons to be angry, she wasn't, you know, looking for reasons to protest in somebody's front yard, she wasn't looking for reasons to be, you know, an antagonist. She was looking for ways to help all the time. And if she saw a challenging situation in the world, she said, what can I do to make that situation less challenging for that individual? How can I contribute? And I think that's a really good way to think about life. And so, as Steve said, she will be sorely missed. She was an integral part of several volunteer groups, and, you know, she was constantly taking on more. So, you know, rest in peace, Judy. I also just wanted to mention, Mayor, that it was very fortunate that we had our firefighters here tonight, because it is National Fire Prevention Week this week. And to celebrate National Fire Prevention Week, what we typically... National Fire Prevention Week, what we typically do is we have a fire open house at the fire station. But last year, we weren't able to do that due to COVID. How many times have you heard that? But this year, they will be doing a meet and greet slash National Fire Prevention Week open house event at the Hero Center next door, which is a really good way to check out the Hero Center if you haven't seen it yet, because it's a great facility. So you'll be able to interact with our firefighters. You'll be able to learn some things about fire prevention and the tools that you can employ at your home to keep your family safe. And that runs Saturday, the 9th from 10 to 1. So plan your Saturday accordingly because you come to Fire Prevention Week, 10 to 1 at the Hero Center, get a little nap in, and then you go have some dinner at the Acacia Lodge. And I'm here to tell you, that spaghetti is absolutely the best. It is, I don't know, they have...
It's got a kick.
Yeah, they have a recipe, I think, that's like, do you know, Steve? Is it like a best-kept-secret sort of thing?
Well, being a Mason, I can't...
Right.
...say a whole lot about it.
Okay.
Except to say that the recipe is in two parts and kept in two different safes.
Sure.
And only one person has the combo for one safe.
Understood. So this is, this is a very closely held secret.
It's good.
But it is, it is well worth the eight bucks. Trust me.
All right, it sounds good. Two, two friendly reminders and then one option or motion I'm going to ask for counsel for support on. Two is just a friendly reminder that tomorrow night on the 7th of October from 4:30 to 6:30 at the training room here at City Hall is the Mississippi Dunes Open House, which is the plan as being proposed, or actually the plan as being proposed. It's our concept with our consultant. It's not the developer. So we're asking for feedback from the public on the park amenities, things like that. So please, if you're able to come in person or go to the website and, and leave your comments. And then next week, on the 12th, from 5 to 7 at the Hero Center, we do have a neighborhood meeting around North Point, which is a significant development proposal that's coming before us in sometime in the near future, that is going to significantly change, I would say, that particular area of our city. So we want to make sure that we hear from the neighbors over there, any issues or concerns that they might have, or anybody in the public in general. My other item I wanted to share with the council is, we haven't, we don't talk about this very often, but there is certain times of the year or years where we, as a council, have the, I'll call it the opportunity to look at council and mayor wages. And so what councilmember, or councilmember, almost promoted you maybe there, Jennifer, our administrator had provided to me about a week ago, I think it was, just a kind of a recap of what a bunch of surrounding, not even just surrounding cities, but cities throughout the metro, kind of in that same range as we are from a city's perspective, and, and what, what do their mayors make in pay and councils make in pay. Well, I can assure you, in looking at all of these cities out there, no one can live on those kind of, those kind of numbers, nor can you here in the city of Cottage Grove. However, in looking at the numbers right now, the council and the mayor pay, as it sits today in the city of Cottage Grove, for similar cities, is about 13% less than average. So we're definitely not the highest, but we are significantly lower. And so what I'm asking for council to approve, if you will, is for our staff to go back and take a look at what are some of the options or ideas that we want to do to make sure that, I'll, I'll say we remain competitive is probably the best way to put it, as it relates to council pay and future mayor pay. And there's a couple new things out there that we were being told about where there's an option, for example, where in the future you can do like a cost of living opportunity, which I think is what most cities are now doing, where you don't have to keep coming back and going, okay, raise it, you just, whatever the cost of living is, it changes it automatically per year, which might be a neat way to do it. But we want to let our staff kind of look at some of the options out there. So what I'm asking for council to do is give me a motion and/or a second so we can instruct staff to go back and take a look at this for us and then bring it back to us in a future meeting.
Mayor, I'll make that motion, that staff go back and take a look at, evaluate what the salaries are and bring it back to the council.
All right, sounds good. I have a motion by Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion?
Well...
Yeah, Councilmember Thede.
I will make one comment. Seeing that 11 years ago, I didn't even think we got paid anything because when I got onto council, you know, I think, I think we're doing just fine, but...
Are they sending you checks every month? I'm just curious. Okay.
All right. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, that was it for me on the, and any other council comments request. Next on our agenda was workshop, open the public, which we do not have this evening. However, we do have a workshop session that's closed the public. And this closed session is our city administrator's performance evaluation. And I'll just mention it out here, that we'll mention it back in the, in the private room, and that is we are closing the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D dot 05 subsection 3A to conduct a performance evaluation of the city administrator, Jennifer Lovett. And so we will not be adjourning in here. We will be adjourning once we're finished in the conference room. So, counsel, we'll meet you over there. Thank you.